I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local clerk.
Mayor Sorino.
Present.
Trustee Sadadi.
Present.
Trustee Ponti.
Present.
Trustee Neznik.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Present.
Trustee Ruffin.
Present.
Trustee Larisella.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
Before we start, I'll ask the gentleman in the back, Doug, to give his little spiel.
Oh, I have to give a spiel? Do I have to stand as well?
Right up front, right up front.
This is the gentleman that's gonna be doing the concerts in the park.
Hi.
So we all know.
Hi.
Hello. And I brought to my wife Karen.
Hi.
And I brought Johnny for support.
Okay.
So my proposal, and I'm not sure if you saw this, I did put it together, I gave it to Kevin. Six concerts to be held over six weeks, starting the week of July 5 at Mizzier Park. And I've decided the concerts would be on a Wednesday, 6 to 8.
Wednesday?
Karen said we should be done by 8 o'clock before it gets started. Because the concerts there in the past, and I've played there. It used to be, what, like 7, 8, 30 or 7, 9.
Yeah, 7 and 9, if they were.
So I thought, hold it a little longer. I will fund the musicians. I'm gonna fund up to $400 max per band. I will select book and pay the performers. I would be in some of the bands and some of the bands I will not be. I know a lot of bands, I've played in a lot of bands, I've been playing for 50 years. Almost as long as him, but not mine. Not as famous as he, though. But I've been playing a long time, and so I know a lot of musicians in the area. The village Jawaffingers will provide the support staff and functions necessary to put a concert on. And I don't know if you're gonna do concessions, I know I've seen them in the past, and we talked about that, so you may not have that. It's fine with me, you know. I only care about putting the music on. Publicity, we talked about the publicity. And I did, I speak to the... I spoke to Heather, because Heather used to do this. Okay, and so the publicity was gonna be two banners, as well as an insert into the water in Sewerville in June, with the listing of the concerts. Whatever else, I don't know if you have a Facebook page or whatever. We'll put it on there every day. What is that?
That's his phone.
That's his phone block. I gotcha, alright, alright. It's a test. Okay. So that's, I did ask about the restrooms. And all I ask is that the band be allowed to use the homestead restroom. And the general public is on the... The band has gotta have a place to go. Me especially. Thank you. Okay, then new restrooms, let's see. I talked about the possibility of a rain date, but I don't think I'm gonna do that. I think we're just gonna leave it this Wednesday. If it goes off, it goes off, if it doesn't, it doesn't. And I'll make that clear to the bands, they don't get paid unless they play. Okay, well, so that's what we'll do there. I don't think that'll be an issue. We also mentioned briefly the use of the new amphitheater by the river. And I personally don't think that's a great idea for these bands. Because you're gonna have, you know, four or five-piece bands. I hate to have five of them at the park and then one down by the river, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
I had to sort it out.
I mean, if you wanna do some other kind of a series at some point, maybe, you know. And so everyone knows it's always there for a certain number of weeks. Great, you know, that's fine, great. To me, it doesn't make sense to mix it up like that. So that's just my thoughts on it. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is it gonna be utilized in the gazebo or...
Gazebo.
Okay.
Yep.
So would vets not be a consideration?
Excuse me?
Would vets' park not be a consideration?
What's vets' park?
Okay, that's down the road. It's a more flat piece of park. Only because you mentioned concessions, and there's concessions here and there, so...
It's up, do they have a covered area?
We needed a specific place.
Is it covered? Is it covered space?
Um, Kevin, is that anything on that cover?
Not, not for a band, if you wanted to use the concession, you could use the concession with the band playing there, so I would say no, it's not.
Now, the band should be covered, just on the case, just in case it does start to rain or something.
Mizzier Park is nice.
Yeah, yeah, the park is nice there, it's got the lights there, so. And it sounds good, it sounds good there. You can get a decent sound there, so. I thought that would be the spot. You know, I've played there before, it's, it's nice. It's a nice, it's a nice spot. What else, okay, questions or issues? No rain date. What time would, would I work with Kevin in terms of the park or...
Me or Ann.
Or who?
Me or, me or Ann.
Oh, okay, alright, great. And so we'd have to decide at what time to make the call if we're gonna cancel.
If you're gonna cancel.
Yeah, so like by 2 o'clock or something. We'd have to make the call. So I'd let the band know.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
A couple hours before, I guess.
Yeah. Now, we also talked about the Hold Harmless Agreement. So somebody's gonna write that up and...
I'd pretty much talk with Craig about that.
Yeah.
So the band would be covered?
Yeah. The band is covered? Well... Or if this was the band signing that they wouldn't sue the village, right? That's what Kat, uh, yeah, that's what Heather mentioned.
We, I talked to Kevin about insurance. Are you insured, workers comp, all that stuff?
Are the bands insured? No.
Or, I guess you're kind of like...
Kind of have a chance, you know.
Well, I'd like the police line up more. Little peep car, you know. We're covered. Probably don't get that.
Well, no. This isn't unlike anything else we've ever done in the park, the vet bands are... Right, correct.
Okay. I'll see that, and I'll make sure that...
Is he saying he's willing to sign something? Not holding, saying they won't sue? Is that what you were saying earlier?
I thought you'd been doing that.
Yeah.
That's what...
Does that not hold any...
That doesn't hold anymore, you're not gonna do that now, or...
I mean, I've never been, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Well...
He's willing, he's willing to sign something, saying that, well, he trips and falls, or he's not...
Right!
A waiver and release.
It's a release, yeah, it's a...
A waiver and release, so we've been prepared to have it, sure, but just wanna make sure everybody's, you know... Well, covered, especially the village, that's what I'm doing.
Well, the clerk can talk to the insurance agent, we've been doing these for a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, this issue really has never cropped up.
So we don't know if the bands will need to sign something, so you're gonna find out if I...
No, they will, we'll prepare a simple release and waiver, but...
Now, do we need to also add a addendum that they won't sue me? If they fall trip and fall? We're laughing, we're laughing, we're not laughing. We're thinking.
We'll leave that up to you. So you, you can prepare your own Hold Harmless agreement, I guess? Yeah.
Why don't you give me, you know, a little template or something? Or should I just use the same kind of thing that you would give me for the village?
I can't give you legal advice, so...
Sorry.
So what does that mean? You can't give me legal, so is, is possible they would sue me?
I would think honestly, you could probably find something like that simply on LegalZoom or something like that. But ultimately, I couldn't imagine someone deciding to wanna sue you because they were walking down the road and tripped and fell. If they did, that would be crazy, but, because you have no... You don't own the property, you're not doing it, you're just... You're giving people an opportunity to play and you're bringing music to the community, I think it's great, I'm super excited about it.
So you don't think it's an issue?
I don't, but I'm just...
You can't give me legal advice?
Don't worry about it, that's...
So don't worry about it. Okay. I just wanted to hear, you know, from, from, from you. I'm just asking the question, that's all I'm doing. What else am I asked?
Don't you agree?
Okay, so, what else? Okay, and we also mentioned...
LegalZoom, though.
Additional funding at some...
We'd have to find it still.
Well, you'd have to find it, and if you don't have it, that's fine, I'm gonna pay the bands and, you know. So if you wanna pay the band some more money, it would go to them, not to me, obviously. So that's, that's your decision.
We just get, we just get more band members if we...
Well, not, not necessarily, you can just pay them more.
Pay them more.
Yeah. So I'll leave that up to you, and you'll let me know.
Yep.
Okay, fair enough. What else? I didn't realize I was leaving... I think the other stuff, we don't have to...
I think you've covered...
I think we've covered everything. I think that's it?
You could tell them the bands you're considering, so they know the genres that you wanna include.
Do you wanna know the types of bands you're thinking about, or...
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
We hope they're all heavy metal bands.
They are, absolutely.
I am okay with that.
No, there, it's, I'm thinking because it's a general crowd, we're gonna have stuff that appeals to most age groups. Like, I'm thinking of having a big band there. Big band sound has been there. So either them or the Jazz Pioneers, which is another band that I've played with a lot, as one of the slots. I'm thinking of having a band that's a little bit of country, a little bit of top 40 pop. I'm thinking of having my band there, the Chain Gang, we do 60s, 70s, and 80s. Classic rock, pop, and dance. I'm thinking of having Willa Vincente tour there. She's an original artist, she does R&B and soul, and a little bit of pop, and she's a marvelous, marvelous singer. She's sung with Chris O'Leary Blues Band. Chris O'Leary has toured international, all around the world. And she was with them for a number of years. And I don't know, I got a whole, I got a whole list of bands. I haven't decided on the fifth and sixth slide yet, but, you know.
I have any...
There'll be something that's, you know, that's not gonna be an issue in terms of, you know, the content or anything.
I, I have one question.
Yeah.
It was brought to my attention that you would like one of the trustees at the thing.
Well, I just want somebody there.
My only concern is that it would, it being Wednesday, when we have our meetings, we wouldn't be able to.
Ah.
Because Wednesdays are meetings.
Right, you know, that's fair. So somebody would, well, Wednesday right now is the day I was looking at. Can we have some kind of representative who's not a trustee?
You said Wednesday, the, the fifth?
It, no, yeah.
It could be somebody going forward off of recreation as well.
Yeah, I dare, it's fine.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be somebody from this, this group.
Okay.
As long as somebody, you know, has the magic keys and knows how to turn on the power if there's an issue or...
Sure.
Or whatever.
I didn't hear you say anything about DuWop.
Do we have any DuWop bands?
I like DuWop.
I like DuWop.
Okay, I have, I have an answer for you from our insurance broker.
Okay.
Yes, the village would be covered if it gets sued, if anyone gets hurt or something gets damaged.
Thank you.
Technology.
Okay, so that's great, so they don't have to sign the waiver?
Not for us.
Is that a unanimous deal?
Well, he's our insurance pro up there, you're talking to him.
Okay, fine, so then I'll, you know, mention that's in advance.
Yeah, you know, I just, I just texted him that we're gonna have bands very consistent with what we've done in the past. Is there any change in insurance requirements? And that's what he said, no.
Any issues?
No, I just, Mr. Mayor and trustees, I can tell you that this gentleman, a career IBMer, is one of the finest men I know. And the fact that he wants to do this for the village harkens back to, starting to remind me of what it used to be like here. And I think it's gonna be a great addition. His band's phenomenal, band called the Chain Gang. And I wanna thank you all for being open to it, and I wanna thank Doug and his wife for wanting to fund something like this. Because, as I've always felt, a lot of the great things that happen in this village happen through volunteers. And this is making me feel good about the direction that we're going. And I wanna thank you all for being open to it and embracing it. It's gonna be a great concert series. Concerts on the village green, what's better than that? So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully we get them advertising, we get, you know, people out.
We'll get it out, yep.
That's why I'm doing it. Any other questions? Good. So what's my next step? Do I just proceed forward and start...
I would, I would call Heather with your, your list of bands, and this way we can get the banners going.
Okay.
Alright, so we can...
So I'll start hoping.
Yep, this way we can have one at Dairy Queen and one at Mizzier Park, like we've done in the past.
Alright, good. I'll proceed forward, thank you.
And whatever you want in inserts.
I'm sorry, I just have one question. It's great to utilize the different radio stations in the area. I-Har, PDH, they all have community or activities, segments of their airtime if they open. Now, if Doug or myself or a combination wanted to go and plug this, would someone wanna come up to the radio station on behalf of the village and chat it up? Because it's, it's good for everybody all around.
I'd be willing to go with you.
Something Ann wants to do, Adam or something.
I'd be happy to go, I, I've been up there and talked with them.
I can set it up. I'll tell it get times and, okay. Just get it out, it just gets it out there and on the radio, and it'll, it'll be more people attending, which is always a good thing. Alright. So we're good to go. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Good, thank you. Yeah, that's great. Good, by the way.
Thanks.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be talking.
You got it.
Okay.
KC Engineering update.
Okay.
Non-water department issues.
Okay, Nancy Clark, John Zarowski. I sent you the report, the KC report, focuses on non-water related issues, the boat house exterior improvements. Most of that work was done in 2020. A parking lot and a patio in the back. The remaining work is to be, is the installation of four lights around the parking lot. And we're waiting for the contractor to give us an approvable submittal, but we think it's almost there. John heard from the contractor today, they're supposed to give us that submittal tomorrow. Grease trap engineering planning grant, that's one, that one's been on the list for a while. That is an engineering report, it's an EFC grant. And it's an engineering report that includes suggested local law revisions that would provide updated grease trap requirements for the village, and it would provide the ability for the building department to enforce the requirements. That was a request last year that the village had. And we're ready with that report and the suggested village code, with the exception of, we have a little bit of financial information that we needed from the village. And I'll, I'll follow up with Jessica and Cory again to, to let them know what it is we need. We had sent them email a while ago, but we'll ask again and finish that up. Bane Park survey and master plan. Last, last, the beginning of 2020, we did site survey of the Bane Park parcel and the DPW yard for the purposes of answering some questions that the board had, but also preparing a base map for design for the Bane Park project. Our scope, in addition to the survey that was completed, our scope includes conceptual master plan for the overall park and a detailed site design for the playground equipment area proposed on the corner and for preparation of a long form part one, AAF. The survey was done, the conceptual master plan was, was prepared in draft form and provided to the committee at a presentation on February 24th of this year. The plans were well received, and the village committee requested that the project be placed on hold pending 2021 village budget review. At that meeting, village reps had mentioned that there is a grant in place for the play equipment and that the village is waiting for CDVG grant decision from Duxes County, which was expected in May for, for possible funding for additional Bane Park improvements. We expect that more, we anticipate, that after the village gets those answers, you might figure out your path forward. The play equipment vendor that was contracted by the village, they expect to install the equipment in around July of 2021, that was what was said in February. In advance of that, there's site work for the village to complete. Design coordination, bidding, construction must proceed before the village can schedule the play equipment installation. The installer, they have specifications on how you have to prepare the ground to receive the equipment, and that's what we were working on. The design remains on hold for the village, and bidding and construction has not been authorized. So when you're ready, if you need something from us, figure out your schedule forward and next steps. In February, the committee had said they thought the next step would be to schedule a public hearing when the village is ready to proceed, to, you know, a public meeting, not a public hearing, a public informational meeting. There's been several public informational meetings about the Bane Park in the, in the past. And, but typical village fashion is to, to share the plans, see if there's any comments, and that would be a good thing to do with this. And then presume proper, prior authorized, authorized design mark when you're ready. The last on the, on the list is EPA grant brownfields assessment. That is a large grant that the village got, and fortunately, the work has been completed. The next steps are expected to be phase two assessments, environmental site assessments at the bleachers pending EPA approval to proceed and other sites to be identified. That grant amount was $197,000, and to date, $46,000 has been spent against the grant budget. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, I got a, from last year's contract, Franny Reese.
Yep.
There's a sinkhole forming by a manhole
Okay.
next to the patio where the stairs are.
Okay.
There's a manhole there, so the, the blacktop is sinking into the ground.
Okay, I'll look.
Before that contract or, or year expires.
Okay. Is that on the lower level or the upper level?
The upper level.
The upper level.
In the parking lot, but going towards, I guess, that patio. Well, I would call it a patio, where, you know, where the overlook would be.
Oh, that, I don't know my home.
Yeah.
Assuming, I'm gonna make a statement, a comment. Assuming, uh... The grant comes in, in June, it doesn't appear it's coming in...
For CDVG for the Bane Park?
Right. We still got a few days left in May, I guess. I would say it's on hold until we know if we, what the grant status is.
Right, right.
But this informational meeting, assuming the grant comes in by the middle of June, when, for the informational meeting...
We're ready for the informational meeting, the plan that was presented in February. There was one comment that Cory had made about softening one of the, the corners for runners, and we had an acute angle, and we softened that. So we think that the, the concept plan is ready.
And so, if there's no objections, then would you be then gonna finish the design coordination, the bidding and the construction after that informational meeting?
We're authorized for design, that, that's it. And, and if you allowed us to proceed after the public informational meeting, we'd finish our dialogue with your vendor for the play equipment, we had started that and, and we would, we would finalize the plan and give it to you. We thought that the village would pursue the Bane Park in phases as money is available. That's why it's a conceptual master plan. And, and, but we knew that the, the corner lot where the play equipment is proposed, that, that was funded. And, and so that would be a little more detail. And, so. I, I don't know what your agreement with the vendor of the play equipment says. My guess is that you won't be installing that equipment in July, maybe you'll be installing it in August. And at some point, hopefully, some liaison from the village is communicating with them.
Yeah, we, so, I know, we were planning on having the meeting in mid-June, that meeting she's talking about. I know Cindy's, Latino's role has changed since this project began. She has been our main liaison, so to speak, between Compan, which is the playground company, and us. And also, their liaison actually passed away unfortunately, so we are meeting a new liaison.
We've already communicated with them, they're, they're very much on the job.
Yes.
When you say new liaison, you mean like a sales rep for the company, or who's the other?
Basically, we moved past that because we've agreed to purchase the equipment. They're nice enough to still sell us to the 2019 price, even though we ended up buying it later. But, what was your question?
No, I was just talking about the, uh...
Oh, we got it. Engineering part?
Yeah, the engineering and, and the construction.
We're, we're ready, we're ready to finish the design when you tell us you want us to
Okay.
move again. We, we would have to figure out what your plan is relative to bidding to see if you need us for, for bidding. You know, you might, you might not. There had been talk that the site work for the play equipment area, that that might be done by the village's equipment and labor contractor. You have a two-year contract all the time with equipment and labor contractors that have equipment and labor. And, and the plans would be adequate for construction. So you, you might not need to do public bidding, so you might not need us for that.
Okay.
Nancy, oh, I'm sorry. When you say that you would go forward and finish the, the...
The conceptual master plan?
Is, is that something that we've paid for already? Or is that something that will be paid for as you go?
I figured you might ask that. So the budget for, for the survey, the conceptual master plan, the detailed site plan, and the EAF, the approved budget is $64,400.
And that's for the whole...
For the whole thing. And the bill to date is $37,000, a little less than $37,100.
So we're, for the entire project is $64,000, and so far, we've paid $37,000?
Correct.
So anything you do from now on needs to be paid for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would be to the 64, that, that's up to, that's our cap.
Okay.
Can I get some clarification on a few things? Well, first thing is, that's $65,400, is that, that's the whole complex? Or is that for, you had mentioned something about stages, only because I'm coming, obviously, late to the...
It's the, it's the survey of, of the, the Bane Park and the W yard. And it's the master plan
Yep.
and the detailed site plan.
Gotcha, okay. And then one other question for my own clarification, in case I have not correct, you know, incorrect information. The playground system, is that an all, is designed to be an all-inclusive? All ability, all ability levels, correct?
I believe that's true. There's, there's that vendor, we needed to understand what they were proposing so that we could do the site coordination.
Right.
And there, there's a, a worldly gig that's for kids on, in chairs. And, and so, yes, it is...
The whole, the whole, I just hear, I'm looking to you because I hear you just...
Yeah, so, I mean, there are aspects of it that a wheelchair-bound kid might be able to use, but we made sure there are, there's something that everyone can use there, so it is all-inclusive.
So is it, is it, so my final question would be, like, have parents of children that are of different abilities, have they been, like, we, we look for feedback and we've talked about proposing it to the public to get some feedback. And sometimes when we do that, we don't always get the people that we need the feedback from most. So have we made any effort, or is that even in your
Well, we, we have...
wheelhouse to make effort to get people who will be using that from a different level of ability?
We, I mean, we always had in mind to keep it inclusive. And on top of that, we had, through choosing, because the, the company, they have so many different play things you can choose from, we had a lot of public meetings. We had public votes on, on what kind of stuff they...
No, I appreciate that, what I wanna know, though, is in those meetings, the people that were voting, are they people with children that need these? Because what someone might think would be great for an all-inclusive thing, if they haven't lived that life or walked that path, might not know. I go to a place called Julie's Jungle, which is focused on that. My kids luckily can use all of the equipment. But there's things there that I'm not even aware of, that other parents who have a different parenting experience are looking for. So I just really specifically, because I got feedback that the answer is no. Parents who have, are walking that life with a child that needs special attention were not consulted. And that what, that feedback wasn't in a, in like an insult to anybody. It was just in like, that's the reality of it. And so can we incorporate that if we're gonna move forward in a final stage, so that we don't create something and go, my God, the people who we're supposed to be including weren't included in the creation of this?
I will say that maybe we didn't directly go for certain people, but obviously, our public meetings are open to anyone who would be willing to give feedback. So, I mean, if they weren't coming to those meetings and we didn't hear them, you know, I would say it's unfortunate, but we tried to keep as open an ear as we can for anyone.
Well, I'm gonna suggest that.
Well, having a public meeting in June, can we ask them to?
Well, the playground has been purchased, the equipment and everything. That meeting for June would be for the overall site plan. But so, I mean, yeah, what we ended up going through the voting process and we ended up purchasing, you know, what feedback we took.
I think you had two public meetings.
Not to be adversarial, but I just want to be clear that I think it's really unfortunate that a position would be, that it's not, you know, that it's unfortunate that people didn't give that feedback if those people weren't in the room, if that's what we're trying to do. I just want to say that because I feel like that's a concern if we erect this thing. I know everybody's heart's in the right place. I just worry if we erect this big thing that's all-inclusive, and people who need that most were not directly sought out to give input. And the answer should not be, in my opinion, those people did not show up to the meeting, therefore, they didn't weigh in, and this is what we're doing.
How, okay, I have.
It's unsettling.
I personally have a son with Down Syndrome, who, which I didn't come to the meeting. I'll be honest. I was not at the meeting, and I heard nothing about anything until after the fact. How would we have gotten the word out to others like myself?
Well, I think.
Other than a meeting?
Well, again, I think we had more than one meeting, but we also had, through Facebook, through mail, we had the designs and a suggestion box also set up at the library for over a month. We tried to just have anyone come in and access. I mean, it wasn't just one meeting. If you missed that meeting, we don't care. We tried to give ample time and ample different scenarios where people can come in. And I understand the concern is maybe we still didn't hit everyone we wanted to hit, but, you know, with what we had, we tried to.
I get that, and don't take, I'm not criticizing you personally, and I'm just saying, like, I didn't, to tell you the truth, I didn't know that the answer from you was gonna be like, we've already chosen the thing, so it is what it is. I was actually expecting you to say, well, there's still some time, and maybe we can consult. So that's good to know.
I will say, because it is a phased project, I mean, the playground can always be expanded. So it's not, we're not locked in till we can't change the playground.
And I don't even think, I mean, it's just, it's equipment. I mean, like, I don't know, does it involve layout? Does it involve where things are or things? I, it's, obviously, I'm talking about something that is out of my wheelhouse. I don't, I haven't faced this. I'm just trying to.
Is there a design we can see?
Well, I would say just going forward with anything else we develop going forward, if we can reach out and make sure our recreation department or whoever's going to be in charge next time, we just need to know that, you know, maybe we reach out and invite somebody. You said you go to some place that's already set up. We can invite them in.
If you'd like to schedule another committee meeting and invite key people that would have perspective for differently-abled children, that sounds appropriate. I mean, there is a design, and we could bring that and show it. And, you know, Compan, from communicating with them, it sounded like they really know their stuff as far as ADA goes. That's their part of the design. We're just doing the site prep. But maybe that would help.
Yeah, because I can't.
Some good feeling that at least they had part of it. You know, so a committee meeting, we could make ourselves available for that.
I just think it would be nice because.
Give a presentation in a small group.
There's a difference between something being compliant and something being stimulating to kids, right? People have bought things for my kids throughout the years, and it's like, no, it's not gonna work. So that is kind of my goal, to have it be, it's, you know, I know everybody's heart's in the right place. It's not anything other than, maybe we can do it this way. So that's great. Moving forward, maybe we could do that.
He did say that it's not like, it can't be altered.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So we could find a way to contact other parents of children with special needs and get their opinions, and then if need be, you know, look at the design, and then if we want, we can still alter it. So.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification.
I just have a question on this brownfield assessment. You alluded to the fact that it was a, you know, fairly decent grant, 97,000, and we spent 47. So.
Forty-six, but yeah.
So when do you think this EPA approval might be forthcoming?
It seems to be glacially slow. We've been talking about that same status for over a year.
At least.
Yeah. So if you want to share what's been done so far?
So far, we've gone through, we had 11 sites that we had proposed to the EPA. We went out and did what's called a phase one audit out there. We go look at the history of all the areas around there, around how many people are. There were environmental site assessments. From that, we then proposed three or four sites, but we have focused in on just the bleachery site, because that's obviously a super fun site, and there was work that wasn't done. So what we're proposing is additional soil exploration under some of the buildings that weren't looked at as part of the EPA proposal that we're waiting for approval on. We've prepared all the quality control plans, we've prepared the health and safety plan, we've done all the paperwork, and we keep getting this. In fact, we've gone through, I think, three different people at the EPA, it's taken so long. So we're trying to get them to move forward, but, you know, it's like, are we good to go or not? And we're still waiting for that at this point. So the next step would then be the phase two, which is actually that, bringing the equipment, moving things, taking soil samples, sending them to the lab a little bit more. And then the rest of that is if, then we go into a cleanup. That's the rest of the grant would be the phase three, for natural cleanup of the site that then can be used. That's what we're talking about with this.
I only say that because I was around a long time ago, and the head guy for the EPA, for 10, 12 years, they dragged their feet.
Oh, it's been, as I said, it's been glacial. We ask them every month or so, hey, any news? And we get, you know, it takes them three or four weeks to even come back for, you know, to say nothing, or they just ignore us.
I think the man retired, or Mike McCabe.
We got through three different people.
Pardon?
We've got through three people on the timeframe, but it's only been two years, and we've got through three people. This, we didn't dot this eye.
So the remaining money from that grant is basically supposed?
We had focused it on just the bleachery site. There was a couple of buildings that we didn't, that in the original audit were never looked at. They didn't look under the building contamination. So we had suggested possibly coming in with a little portable drill rig and drilling into inside buildings to see if there's any contamination under the buildings. That was the phase two. You know, should go and do some real exploration, try to identify if there's a contamination and how extensive the contamination is. If we find it, then you get into a, a lot of times, it's a, you know, it's a human chase. You're digging up dirt until you find an area that you don't have contamination anymore. So you see big holes at gas stations. So it's a big place.
Okay. Can I ask one question about the grease trap plan? Is that to move away from the current one and get the grease traps in the buildings? Is that the smaller?
Part of it, the old grease trap ordinance, if you have sites of previous health standard. Because of that, we're way differently at the health department than the current health standard, and this would bring us up to date, but then also give the building department the ability to go in and find them if they're not maintained.
Gotcha. And does it also, does it give anything, does it give any guidance as to putting those smaller grease traps into the buildings?
As on the use.
Yeah, okay. So it's like, building department discretion or something like that?
Yes. If it's a small use, you probably, you might be able to use a smaller one, but if you're in a restaurant with grease, you really need a big one.
Well, I mean, they can be big, but I guess what I'm saying is just those units that are housed in the basements rather than the reservoirs outside. So when I say small, I didn't mean.
It refers to the updated.
Allowing them be, rather than the 80s, the 1980s thing. Okay.
The biggest thing is it gives the enforcement, which you totally lack.
Right. For them to get in and say, hey, you're not maintaining, and, yeah.
Report, mandatory reporting from the owner to the village, and then enforcement, and the owner having to give access to the building department to inspect with 24-hour notice, and, you know, there's fines in there if you don't apply. None of that exists now.
And Trinunia is pushing.
Yeah.
Grease removal because they're having problems.
Yeah, and you've had a big problem. I mean, the TV line inspection and cleaning that we did in prep for the contract for sewer improvements, I mean, it was awful. On Route 9, there was one location where the contractor, who had the biggest of trucks and the best of equipment for jetting and, you know, these big augers, he actually had to quit early that day so he could come back the next day with a bigger auger, because he couldn't get through the grease. And there was one restaurant on Route 9 where you could see cuts in the asphalt, where they had their sewer lateral from the building, that this lateral obviously got plugged, and then they installed the next lateral, got plugged, and then there was a third lateral. So there were three cuts into your sewer with two laterals full, not usable anymore, and their solution was to just put in laterals. Yeah, we looked like that when we discovered.
I can't believe that.
Yeah. We let the building department know, but you don't have teeth, because it's not your
Wow. And when do you think that'll be done?
We'll coordinate with Jessica and Cory to get the financial information we need for the report. EFC is very rigid on the style of report, and they tell you exactly, this is the format, here's our template, use this, provide that. And so they're wanting, you know, like user costs in your sewer district, information that we don't have. And once we get that, we're ready to submit it to you, focus for your review, and we should have your village attorney look at the proposed legislation just to get legal, and it'll be ready to be submitted. And that job, it was a two-year grant, it started last year. The budget is 33,000, and we billed 20,000.
I missed that, Nancy, I'm sorry. Did you have proposed legislation for the grease trap?
Yes, yeah, it's part of the report, yeah. So we'll release it to the village when we are able to finish the report. So I'll coordinate with Cory and Jessica.
And so do you think that's like, what kind of timeframe do you think that might be?
As soon as we get the information from Cory and Jessica, we can get it to you within a couple of weeks. It's ready, except for the missing piece.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
You know, if we submit it to EFC, they'll bounce it back, because it's got a missing piece.
It won't be like the EPA, and like, three of us will die.
No, 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 no. There's a young, bright-eyed, energetic EFC person on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for us? Let me know if there's something you want us to be doing on Bane Park. And if you do want to put together another workshop meeting, where certainly, we can put that, you know, a committee meeting, right? Okay? Thank you.
So we have the, I think it's kind of now been, we've decided the Festival of the Falls will be on a different night than the 9/11.
Mayor, that date will be on 9/18, from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m.
For Festival of Falls?
Festival of Falls.
12:00 to what?
12:00 to 6:00. That's what the email Cindy sent out, so September 18th.
And 9/11 is on 9/11, at 7:00.
There is no time. I don't know who's doing it. Recreation will be doing it, but.
Okay. Okay.
It's up to them.
Well, I'll entertain a motion for the Festival of the Falls to be on 9 September 18th, from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second it.
All in favor? I'll entertain a motion for the memorial service for 9/11 to be on September 11th. Time to be determined later.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? So we have the storage of material presently stored at the industrial park. This is Christmas wreaths, Christmas decorations, any other thing that we've got in the industrial park will now have to be transitioned over to probably the boathouse. Or wherever, so.
I think the boathouse would be good where the old water department was.
Right, and we.
We took a walk the other day.
And trustee Ubern, myself, scoped it out, so to speak. We came up with that as the best scenario. And if there was, if you wanted to put some benches that are stored in there, you could put them in the boathouse. Maybe there'll be a meeting there, you know, if it was indeed possible. But there's a few things down in there. This, I don't know, six benches, maybe? And a few things. So we're gonna have to clean that out, clear it out, and then bring the Christmas decorations over. So that's a discussion point. We can talk to Pete or somebody else. Or if Kevin feels strong someday, we can utilize Kevin.
Pick you up.
Yeah.
If I can help.
Or Aunt Ponty, trustee Ponty's willing to give a little elbow grease.
Absolutely. And now my van back.
After we do the grease traps, we can do the elbow grease. So, okay, very good. This item, this resolution is for the proposed hire of attorney Wise. Who's gonna introduce the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Is there gonna be a second?
Second.
This was Adam and Jen. Clerk, you want to read that?
Be it resolved that Mackey, Butts, and Wise LLP be and hereby is employed and retained for such legal advice and services as may be required for representing and defending the village of Wapengers Falls for all matters of labor and employment, as such services may be required from time to time. And be it further resolved that Mackey, Butts, and Wise And be it further resolved that Mackey, Butts, and Wise be and hereby is employed and retained as conflict attorney, as needed whenever the village attorney is unable to provide legal services because of any professional conflict. And be it further resolved that Mackey, Butts, and Wise shall be paid at a rate of one hundred ninety-five dollars per hour for senior associates and one hundred seventy-five dollars per hour for junior associates.
I will just, okay, I will just add one thing. I suggest to the board that there is one pending case that is on hold. This is the PBA interest arbitration over civil service law, section seventy-one procedure, and the perb case related to the same. So I, I would suggest that we have Zuckerman finish that up when it is deemed time for them to do it. They're on hold. It's all on hold, since he knows the whole situation. That's a sidebar to this, where it says all matters, except one. Now, if board members don't want that, they can rescind their motion if they want, and if they can rescind the second.
I'm fine with that.
Are, are you fine with that?
I'm fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You need to do a roll call vote, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor Serino?
Aye.
Trustee Hubert?
Aye.
Trustee Sadati?
Aye.
Trustee Neznik?
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin?
Aye.
Trustee Ponty?
Aye.
Trustee LaRisella?
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, that wraps that up. Do you have one item in executive session?
I have two items that I'd like to talk about now, before you go in exec. And I have one there.
I got one too.
Very quickly, I'm your insurance coordinator for the village and our renewal is up right now for NYMIR that covers our automobiles, our property, and public officials and all of that. And that stayed pretty much flat at five point, a one-point-five percent increase, which is really good. The other one I represent, or I, I work with is, where did I put it? The other one is PERMA. And what PERMA's doing, I usually don't say anything unless there's something worthwhile to say. The premium this year is one hundred and forty-four thousand. It was one forty-one last year, one forty-one point six. So that's very close, too. But the reason I brought this up is because they're offering a two-year plan. If you sign up for two years, you'll get a much lower rate. Instead of being one forty-four like it is this year, it'll be one thirty-seven point five if you go with the two-year. And, but you have to stay under the ratio of thirty-five percent of loss ratio, which we should be able to do. And then after, and if you, but if you do go over the thirty-five percent loss, it would be one forty-one point six, which is still less than what you have this year.
What is our loss ratio? Has, have we determined what it is?
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but it's very low.
Okay.
So unless you object, I need to tomorrow commit to the extra year. Any objections? You're not gonna lose one way or the other.
You need a formal vote?
Well, I put it in the minutes that there were no objections, so if you want to vote, you can do that.
I don't have an objection.
I have no objection.
John, do we have to pay for both years upfront?
Huh?
We're gonna pay for both years upfront, is that what you're saying?
Can't hear.
Are we paying for both years upfront?
No.
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 It'll be that, this year it'll be, say, one forty, next year it'll be one forty, whatever the actual number.
One forty-four, one forty-four this year, one thirty-seven five if you stay underneath the thirty-five loss rate. I just, whenever there's something that's different, I'll bring it to your attention. The other case I'd like to talk to you about, if you go into exec.
You know what, I'd like to make, I'd like to memorialize this for future board.
Okay. So we need a vote to, if somebody would vote to approve the two-year proposal for PERMA.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ruffin and trustee LaRisella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Good.
So noted. Your next item?
That's it.
I have one there. Just to let the board know, tomorrow and Friday, the gentleman from Alpine will be coming, coming to take the trees down out of Frandy Reese Park. Unless something changes, they'll be there tomorrow and Friday.
Okay. Are you suggesting that we-
You want to go down and watch?
Have to buy a gallon of three-in-one oil or A-one oil when he starts cutting?
Yeah, I need some bar oil. Fresh under the water cuts.
You had an executive session?
Yes, I have one issue, legal.
I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Trustee Niznik. All in favor?
Aye.
I also have something too in that tonight.